All the order, this is a regular meeting of the Raton City Commission. Could we have roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sagada.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Chavez.
Present.
Commissioner Jacamo.
Present.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Present.
Could you all please join me with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, I started a little before you got up there, bud.
Take it more time.
Want to thank everybody for showing up tonight for our meeting. Appreciate you all coming out and having an interest. Couple of announcements, the City Commission Workshop is scheduled for 10:00 a.m. April 30th, 2022 at the Raton Readiness Facility, 33808 U.S. Highway 64. The agenda will be posted 72 hours prior as required by the Open Meetings Act. And if you're not familiar with that place, it is the armory out by the airport. Okay? Next regular commission meeting is Tuesday, May 10th, 10/22, or 2022 at 6:00 p.m. Now, we've got a few proclamations we're going to dispense with here this evening. First is a proclamation declaring Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2022. Commissioner Chavez.
Proclamation Motorcycle Awareness Month, May 2022. Whereas motorcycles are used as regular means of transportation for commuting, touring, and recreation in and around Raton, New Mexico, and whereas the Raton scenic roadways make motorcycling a very popular destination for riders across the country. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires the use of acquired skills developed through a combination of training and experience, the use of good judgment, and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas it is imperative that the residents of Raton be aware, show consideration, and share the road with motorcycles on the streets and highways, and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, it is the desire of the office of the mayor to join the NHTSA in raising awareness of the growing number of motorcyclists on Raton's roadways in order to help prevent accidents and, more importantly, save lives. Will now therefore be resolved that the Mayor James Neil Sagada, Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, to hereby proclaim May 2022 as Motorcycle Awareness Week, and urge our citizens to be observant, courteous, and knowledgeable about motorcycle usage in our community. In witness whereof, I have therefore set my hand in the seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affected this 26th day of April 2022. Signed, James Neil Sagada, Mayor of Raton.
Anyone to accept?
No.
Okay. Next, we have a proclamation, Better Speech and Hearing Month, May 2022. Mayor Pro Tem Schuster.
Right. By the time I'm done, I may lose my voice, but we'll do our best. Whereas many of us take communication for granted, illness or injury makes hearing, speaking, thinking, or swallowing a challenge for many Americans. And whereas by impairing communication, speech, language, and hearing disorders can limit academic achievement, social adjustment, and career advancement. And whereas audiologists and speech-language pathologists are professionals who specialize in the identification of treatment and communication disorders, conditions, and affect millions of Americans. And whereas each year during the month of May, audiologists and speech-language pathologists throughout the nation make special effort to inform, educate, and raise public awareness of hearing, speech, language, and swallowing disorders. And whereas more than 42 million people in the United States, one in 10 families have hearing, speech, language, cognitive, or swallowing impairments. And whereas most people with communicative disorders can be helped through medical and surgical treatment, hearing aids, and hearing and speech rehabilitation. And whereas the health care costs for therapy devices and medical care, plus the indirect costs of income loss for people with communicative disorders are estimated at more than $30 billion per year. And whereas with early diagnosis and proper treatment, most people with communication disorders can lead full and productive lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Raton, New Mexico, does hereby proclaim May 2020 as Better Speech and Hearing Month. In witness whereof, the seal in the City of Raton is affixed this 26th day of April. Signed, Neil, James Neil Sagada. I might also mention that the month of April is Occupational Therapy Month, and through their expertise, they identify ways to overcome obstacles in performing daily tasks. And maybe next year, we'll actually have a formal proclamation for occupational therapy. But in the meantime, I think we have a couple of people here to accept this proclamation. Is that right?
Cool.
So, can you guys both say your names? Cornwater on speech therapists for the school system.
Thank you, Craig. I'm the specialist.
Very good.
And we have proclamation number three, Drinking Water Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. Commissioner.
Grass water follows a natural cycle from earth to air again. Whereas water is the most valuable natural resource. And whereas water is the basic and essential medium of every living creature. Whereas only tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy and quality of life that we enjoy. And whereas any measure of success for society, though more galaxy rates, economic growth, and diversity productivity, and public safety, and in some way, create to access safe water. And whereas we all are stars of water infrastructure, one which future generations depend, and the citizens of Raton should have a safe, dependable supply of water now and into the future. Now therefore, James Neil Sagada, Mayor of Raton, hereby proclaims May 1st, 7th, 2022 as Drinking Water Week. In the City of Raton, here are all citizens to help protect resources of water from pollution, to practice water conservation, and to get involved in local water issues, or getting to know their water. In witness here, I hereby set my hand in, because the seal of Raton to be affixed this 26th day of April 2022. Signed, Neil Sagada.
Anybody here? Anybody here from the water?
Uh-uh.
What's up with that? Come on, Scott, get on these people. All right. Finally, we got a proclamation, Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through 7th, 2022. Municipal Clerks Week, May 1st through May 7th, 2022. Whereas the office of the municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the municipal clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other levels. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas the municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the municipal clerk. Now therefore do I, James Neil Sagada, Jr., Mayor of the City of Raton, New Mexico, recognize the week of May 1st through 7th, 2022 as Municipal Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to our city clerk, Michael Ann Antinucci, Deputy Clerk Desiree Trujillo, and to all municipal clerks for their vital services they perform, and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. In witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand in seal and cause the seal of the City of Raton to be affixed this 26th day of April 2022. I guess you're up, Desiree.
Mayor, what we lack in drinking water personnel, we make up for in clerks.
Oh, there's Michael Ann. She's hiding, she's hiding in the back. I didn't see her.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate you.
We appreciate you guys. Moving on, committee reports from commissioners. Commissioner Chatterley.
Okay. The Colfax County Senior Citizens Board met February 8th. A presentation was made by Washington Federal Insurance Group with some potential options for a cost-sharing employee health returns plan. No action was taken. Policy revisions and new record retention policy were approved. There was some discussion about the two board positions opening up soon. There was also a lengthy discussion on the budget. Concerns included rising costs, especially related to food and home-delivered food trays, along with the increase in minimum wage. One big issue is that the Older Americans Act doesn't include support for some of the services that are, that aging and long-term would like the centers to provide. So adequate reimbursement money is not always provided for the services and costs of the corporation. And right now, the cares and ARP monies are making a difference, but everyone is unsure about potential funding sources that would be recurring in the future for rising costs. For the month of March, at the Raton Senior Center, there were 514 complicated meals served, 1,189 wrapped goat, and 2,849 home-delivered meals provided. The Senior Center always appreciates donations made towards those meals and services which go directly to the costs for the meals or whichever service has been donated for. I also attended this afternoon the non-metro AAA Colfax Assessment Entrance Meeting, and it looks like they're going to be doing a little bit of a deeper look into the center's financials and nutritional program. The biggest challenge identified in that meeting was the lack of staffing and the budget concerns, which I mentioned earlier. The greatest strength that they talked about was the teamwork of the staff that they have. Everyone does a really great job pitching in and making the program run successfully. The next board meeting is scheduled for May 19th. I also attended the Raton Main Street MRA meeting on April 13th. Very interesting. I didn't know anything about the MRA or the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan. And so they talked about different tools for that, and discussed the need for seed money to help with projects. And there will be a follow-up meeting made then from 1:00 to 3:00 on Zoom. The North Central New Mexico Economic Development District didn't meet, but we will be meeting this Friday at 1:30. And along with most of you here and there, last week I attended various meetings with state and federal representatives. That's all ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacamo.
Yeah. Raton Public Service Company Board of Directors meeting was held on March 23rd, 2022 at 5:30 p.m. Robin Oliver, RPS manager, office manager, and bookkeeper, presented to and approved by the Board of Financial and Strategic Information. RPS General Manager Dave Bencino covered the monthly work activities, including running a unit four for the scheduled monthly maintenance test run, as agreed to by the group's management and the energy. Both the residential customer count and the commercial customer count have been increased by a couple each in the month of December. There were still 184 meters in the walking book and 275 meters to be replaced with the new AMI meters. And there was no meeting scheduled this month with Arthur Johnson Memorial Library Board. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez.
Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Schuster and myself attended the Raton Water Board meeting. Lake Maloya is currently spilling over the spillway. The city is off simmering water at that time, and we're getting the solely from the Maloya water. The Water Department will attempt to seal the spillway in the fall. They originally had tried to have this job done in the spring now, but the water came up too fast, so they're going to do it in the fall. When the Environmental Secretary visited the sewer plant for inspection, and we approved the finances for the last quarter. Do you have anything, Mayor Pro Tem?
No. Good job.
Also met with the Financial Advisory Committee on April 21st, and we approved a financial report to present to the commission this evening. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Pro Tem Schuster.
So, I attended the Water Board meeting, and then April 20th, the Lodgers Tech's Board was scheduled, but they did not have a quorum, which was a good thing because we were booked up. And met with Teresa Ledger Fernandez, as well as a couple other people running for office, and then Under-Secretary Social Torres Small, who is now Under-Secretary to the USDA Department of Agriculture. So we had a full day with them, started about 10 o'clock and ended about 5:00, and toured the Veterans Clinic, as well as had a discussion at the Schuler Theater with veterans. That was pretty good insight to how they're feeling about the closure, the possible closure. It's not set in stone, and hopefully it will not happen. But that was very insightful, I thought. Some of the Congresswoman brought, they each brought a kind of a group with them. Jennifer Sanchez, who is our field representative for Teresa Ledger Fernandez, is, she's stationed in Las Vegas, so her information is available on the website if you want to get ahold of the Congresswoman. That's about all I have.
Okay.
Oh, wait, no. I think Mr. Barry will probably tell you more about it, and I'm going to let him because my voice is giving out. But then Friday, we ended up having one person come as an evacuee, and so we opened up the convention center for evacuees of the fire, although we only had the one person. And so the Red Cross did come on time this time, and so they were able to basically run the show. But Mr. Barry and myself got that going, and a few other people. But I'll let him tell you all about it.
Thank you.
As for myself, March 25th, New Mexico Self Insurers Fund Executive Board met. We met in Santa Fe to discuss outstanding claims. When hands changed over in the spring of 2020, there were about 150 outstanding claims that had not been resolved. Right now, all but 14 have been resolved in that timeframe, so AJ and his staff are doing a great job there. There were two cases that may exceed the cap limits, and the fund was asked to consider covering these costs by the communities, but that's a decision that will have to be brought to the board in full. So no action was taken on those. On April 7th and 8th, I was asked to be a participant and presenter at the recent Mali Newly Elected Officials' Meeting in Santa Fe. There were over 100 participants, of which 68 were newly elected. Program was very informative, well-organized, and a lot of good information. As Mayor Pro Tem stated, April 20th, we hosted Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez and Under-Secretary Social Torres Small. We started the day off, as she said, meeting and greeting some folks running for governor. And then we met for lunch with the Congresswoman and the Under-Secretary. We discussed some economic development projects that we're involved in, and they were very excited about what's happening in Raton and the area. So that was a very good meeting. And then, as the Mayor Pro Tem stated, we attended the VA meeting, we toured the VA clinic with the Congresswoman and her staff, and then all of us reconvened with the Under-Secretary out at the Waste Treatment Plant to go over upgrading that facility to meet the new standards that are coming up. And that was a very informative, good meeting, and it looks like we may get some assistance there. Then the next day, April 21st, Scott and myself and Commissioner Chatterley met with AJ Forty, the New Mexico Municipal League Director. He was making his rounds. This is the year that our district doesn't have elections, so we did not have a district meeting, so this was his way of informing us what the league was doing. We talked about claims that were outstanding with the city and that they have been resolved. We then talked about possible new legislation, that's bringing up some, bringing some to the league. AJ was very helpful and said they would form the legislation for us if we gave them the outline. So that was a very good meeting. Saturday, the 23rd, I attended the grand opening of the High Country Me. That was fantastic. A lot of people showed up. Good food, great business. I think this is a great addition to the community, and it was very well-attended.
It was great food.
It was, it was great food, wasn't it?
Yeah.
The desserts, the desserts, really good.
I like that barbecue sauce.
Yeah, yeah. And then yesterday, we attended the Cook's Peak Fire Incident Command Meeting, we being Mr. Barry and myself, along with Mayor Gonzalez of Simero, Mayor Gallegos of Maxwell, and Mayor Lopez of Springer. We all attended that meeting in Wagamound yesterday at 10:00 a.m. All of us had concerns that not enough was being done to put the fire out on the Colfax County side, not enough effort. On Sunday, we had had prior discussions with the incident leader, and were then invited to attend the meeting. Our concerns of the watershed that affects all three communities were brought to light with them. They had a good understanding after we finished discussing that with them, and those issues were addressed. After that meeting, we then proceeded to Las Vegas, where we had a face-to-face with Governor Lou Han Grisham, very receptive to our concerns, wanted to know what more we could do. And as a result, there's over 500 firefighters on the ground now fighting the Cook's Peak Fire. So it was well worth traveling and the meeting. Also, I believe his name was Mr. Kelly with Homeland Security?
Yeah.
Or was his first name Kelly?
His last name, I believe.
Yeah. He was there, he was in attendance, assuring us that we would get what we needed, so that was good. She informed us she would do what she could do to get everything going. We also briefly discussed economic development in our state, where we are now number five in the nation for economic development growth. I got the question right, so she was excited. Hey! And then, that was about it. Right now, the Cook's Peak Fire is the number three priority fire in the country, so a lot of effort being put on that. And then tomorrow, we have an RPS meeting, and that's all I have. Moving on to the business items. Item 7A, deliberate and act on approval of April 12th, 2022, regular meeting minutes. If all had a chance to go over them? I did not see anything. Make a motion to approve the minutes?
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, public hearing, City of Raton Fiscal Year 23 Interim Budget. Mr. Barry.
Mayor and Commissioner, this is in relationship to the upcoming budget cycle. We have scheduled a work session for the commission, that would be this Saturday, as you had stated, Mayor, at the old armory at the municipal airport. And so that is a public meeting. The public is invited to come, and throughout the budget cycle, the public is invited to make their comments to the commission. This is a public hearing, and so we would invite anybody that's here to stand up and provide their comments. It is a, one thing that we stated in support of the workshop, it's a little different type of budget year than what we've seen for a number of years. And so we'll talk about some specific things. As we've noted, there is a little bit of maybe moving around of resources at the City of Raton, some organizational shifts there. We want to talk about that with the commission. We provide all of the basic services that we always have, as we have provided those. However, we have some initiatives related to cleanup of town, economic development, promotion of tourism, those kind of things that we would like to talk about. This would be a chance for the commission really to discuss that amongst yourselves in a workshop-style setting. So that's something we haven't done for a few years, so look forward to that. That's at 10:00, and then we're going to, we're going to go until the commission tells us that they're done. So for that matter, I think we would invite the public between now and when we submit the interim budget to Department of Finance Administration to make their comments on what they see with the budget. And, you know, whatever that comment is, I will share that with the commission. So I would say that we do have some decisions to make here, not only for this year, but really strategically looking forward. And so I would really invite the public to provide their input. And that would kick us off here. Michael Ann did report too, that we have the process where we submit the interim budget, and then we will go through a little more work, and then we'll submit a final budget to DFA, to the Local Government Division, which requires their approval. So it would require some things like maintaining a minimum reserve in the general fund. They look at if we are incurring recurring costs and proposing to pay for that with one-time revenues. They want to see that the revenues and the expenditures generally match. Generally, we have an analyst that looks that over, but it would require their approval ultimately, both times.
Okay. As Mr. Berry stated, this is a public hearing for the fiscal year 23 interim budget. Anyone wishing to address us tonight with any questions or concerns may do so. But we are also holding the workshop shop Saturday, where I think it'll be very productive at, at that time. So anyone wishing to address us now may do so.
It's 10:00 for Saturday?
10:00 a.m. Whenever. If Mr. Chavez has anything to say about it, 10:25, but yeah. But we'll, we'll, we'll be there. I would say a couple hours anyway, yeah. Alrighty. Item C, deliberate and act on event forums for Rattone Main Street Carnival, June 20th through 26th, and the balloon rally, July 2nd through 4th. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, these are two events that are really popular in Rattone. They are recurring. They've happened for a number of years, sponsored by Rattone Main Street. We do have a couple of representatives from Rattone Main Street present. I think they would like to probably discuss their events in the public forum here. I will say that the reason for the commission action here is to really ensure that all of our emergency responders and our, our traffic control people have reviewed the events. And if they have any questions, they work with the group. We want to ensure public safety to the extent that we can and make sure that we are prepared for that. So that has happened in, in this case. You can see in the forums, the staff has reviewed that and signed off that they're, they are indeed prepared for both of these. But I would call on Main Street to tell us about your events.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, City Manager, Desiree, all y'all. So we're bringing the carnival back. It's very popular. We're working with the high school. We'll have it at the high school parking lot. But the reason we do an event forum, as City Manager Berry said, is so that our emergency services and our first responders are ready for it. Chief Burke and his crew will do a site inspection, and this happens every year, prior to the carnival opening, just, you know, safety. And then, of course, the chief of police has signed off here, and he'll usually send patrols there, just in the evenings, you know, can get, there can be a lot of people there. So we want everything safe and everybody to enjoy it and have a good time. And we have provided our insurance here, which is paid for by the carnival itself. And they cover Rattone Main Street, they cover the City of Rattone, and they cover Rattone High School. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any questions? Here comes Chris. Here she comes.
Hi, Mayor, Commissioners. We're happy to announce that Main Street is in its ninth year of organizing the International Saturday Trail Balloon Rally to be held over the Fourth of July weekend. Attached to the event forum is the event schedule. We are happy to provide, this is one of two premier signature events that we hold for our community. And the balloon rally is a popular event, and we're hoping to get, we've got pilots, we've got sponsors. It's held over at La Mesa Airfield. The event forum, of course, covers where the fire department will usually, is usually there when the propane truck is provide, is there. And that will be the first two days of the rally on Saturday and Sunday. And they're there for safety reasons, of course. We have, you know, we, we get porta-potties out there, but that's a private, the other help that we get from the city is usually the dumpsters and things like that that we need out on the field. We have our MOU and everything set with the county for the use of La Mesa Airfield. And so all that is set, and we're ready to go. And we're just happy to continue to promote Rattone as a awesome destination for the Fourth of July holiday weekend. Any questions?
Are you gonna have a pancake breakfast?
Yes, sir. We'll have the Alx Lodge out there, providing their delicious pancakes with the blueberry toppings and all that really good stuff. Yeah, so we'll have the Alx Lodge out there for pancake breakfast. And so we're hoping to just have another successful, high-flying success rally.
Absolutely. We're looking forward to its great events. Any other questions, comments? Have a dinner, there's any motion?
I have a motion to approve the event forums for Rattone Main Street Carnival, June 20th through 26th, and the balloon rally, July 2nd through 4th.
A motion and a second to approve the event forums for Rattone Main Street Carnival and the balloon rally. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, deliberate and act on film liaison appointment. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, I do bring to you an, one application for a person to serve as a film liaison. This is the qualifications of Anne Theis. We have worked with Anne, and she is a part of the L. Rattone Media Group, associated with the efforts to bring film production to Rattone and the Kearney School Workforce Development Facility. We've talked about that quite a bit. There are some, some networking opportunities coming up that we want a Rattone representative to be present at, and by consideration of, of this appointment, Anne would be able to represent Rattone as our film liaison and try to promote Rattone as a filming location. In past years, we have had Mr. Lucas Jansen as our film liaison. The young Mr. Jansen has informed me that he has submitted his resignation from that position for some personal reasons. And so we've had that open just here recently. We do have these film events coming up, so I would bring this to your, for your consideration. If you are favorable to that, we would schedule to have Ms. Theis represent Rattone at these events.
All right, thank you. Any comments, questions?
I think she's highly qualified, so I will move to approve Anne Theis as the film liaison.
A motion and a second to approve Ms. Theis as our film liaison. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item E, deliberate and act on bid award for Rattone Senior Center shingle roof project. I'd like it in the minutes that I will be abstaining from the vote on Items E and F. Mr. Berry?
Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioner, I have asked for sealed bids for a portion of the roof replacement at Senior Center. Now, there basically are three portions of roof. There's the addition, which has a shingle portion, and, and that roof is, is in good shape, not very old, I think is performing well. Then we have a membrane roof kind of in the center of the building. And then around the edges, we have a shingle roof that is questionable, and it's given us some problems in the building, especially over the kitchen. So I did ask Alpha Design to do the design work on this, help us with a bid package. You do have a recommendation for award from Alpha Design. We did get a number of qualified bids to do the work, and so we're very happy with that. Four bids were received. The low bid was submitted by Superior Roofing of New Mexico. That is an Albuquerque-based company, and they came in at $18,617.23. That excludes applicable grocery receipts tax. Alpha Design has recommended award of the contract for construction of the roofing improvements to Superior Roofing of New Mexico in that amount, $18,617.23.
All righty. Any questions or comments for Mr. Berry? Make a motion to approve. A motion and a second to approve the, to accept the award for Rattone Senior Center Shingle Roof Project to Superior Roofing of New Mexico. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item F, deliberate and act on bid award for Rattone Senior Center Exterior Maintenance and Repair Project. Mr. Berry?
Uh, Mayor, similar to the previous item, I did ask Alpha Design to design certain repairs to the seniors' building and then put together a package for sealed bids. The work would include the replacement of water-damaged ceilings over the driveway and over the southeast-covered patio. It would include replacing damaged skylight lenses and painting most of the exterior stucco and work related to the stucco repair. Since the work is substantially different than the roofing, and we would expect a different kind of contractor would look at that, we did split this work up independently, asked for a sealed bid independently. We received two bids. The low bid was submitted by Nature Scapes. That's a Simeroon-based company, and they bid $34,000 even, and that excludes applicable New Mexico grocery tax. Alpha Design recommends award to Nature Scapes incorporated in the contract amount of $34,000 plus applicable tax.
All righty, thank you. Questions, comments for Mr. Berry?
I have a motion to approve the bid award for Rattone Senior Center Exterior Maintenance and Repair Project to Nature Scapes?
A second.
A motion and a second to accept the bid award for the Rattone Senior Center Exterior Maintenance and Repair Project by Nature Scapes. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. And the seniors appreciate that. Thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on 2022 Capital Outlay Grant Agreement between the City of Rattone and New Mexico Main Street for Train Depot renovations. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm glad that we have Rattone Main Street present here. This is a collaboration between SISI staff and, and Rattone Main Street. And, you know, that partnership has, has really brought some great results for downtown Rattone, specifically in the First Street area. This is a project we've talked about for a while. This is grant funding that would go towards renovation of the Rail Depot building. And so this is, this comes from capital outlay that was appropriated to New Mexico Main Street. Rattone Main Street and City of Rattone did collaborate on an application for this. At the time, we had stated that we've had really, you know, outstanding luck with the Great Blocks Program, and it probably was not our turn to receive some of this funding. But I think because the, the record here in Rattone is, is really good about putting these funds to work, not, you know, that doesn't happen in every New Mexico town, we did receive some funding. And so I believe that the, let me, let me find the amounts here, and we'll, we'll try to get it correct. So the appropriation amount of this grant funding is $270,900. And then there would be a match provided by the City of Rattone, as identified in the grant agreement. And that would be funded by general funds. I would say that this would go to a number of, of activities, but the intent is actually to renovate the building and restore it to an original condition, probably minus the spires. But that's something that generates a lot of discussion in Rattone. But if you are a, if you're an Amtrak passenger and you use the, the building, it is, it's one of our most iconic buildings. It looks cool from the outside, but it's not cool on the inside. It's very sparse. We just don't, you know, meet the expectations of the travelers. And so we'd really like to remove the partition walls, restore the lobby. There is the original ticket counter behind the partition wall, renovate the restrooms, and do a better job of, of providing the services that Amtrak passengers really need. So this would be a first phase. This is not going to complete the project. As a matter of fact, I think a lot of this funding would go towards design of the building. And if you are restoring one of your most iconic buildings, that's, that's gonna go through a rigorous review by Historic Preservation. So I think that would be a lengthy process. We would anticipate getting some design professionals on board that are experienced in this particular type of project, experienced with the SHPOs procedures. A lot of that will be the design, and then out of that, we'll know what we're building and have a good estimate of what the total cost of that would be. That would allow us to then seek the funding on the additional phases. But I would anticipate that we would have funding to begin construction of the building as well. So because it's a lengthy process going to the SHPO, I think that, you know, it's not gonna go very quickly, but we do want to get every detail in the restoration correct. So there's a, there's a good reason for that. So I bring this grant agreement to you for your consideration. You would be committing general funds to the batch, and we'll get started on a project that we have talked about since 19-something. It's been, it's been a long time, so.
All right, thank you. Any comments or questions for Mr. Berry?
I will move to approve that grant agreement.
Second, a motion and a second to approve the grant, the Capital Outlay Grant Agreement between City of Rattone and New Mexico Main Street for the Train Depot renovations. Is there any further discussion?
Thank you guys for taking it on.
Yep. All in favor, vote by the sign of aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. You guys can't leave?
I have a rehearsal party.
Oh, come on.
Love y'all.
Have a good night.
Item H, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-21, authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan agreement and intercept agreement by Anne between the City of Rattone and New Mexico Finance Authority for purpose of purchasing two new fire apparatus. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is an item that City Clerk slash Treasurer, Michael Ann Antinucci, has worked on pretty much throughout the process. It's a lengthy process of financing this through New Mexico Finance Authority. And if I could call on Michael Ann to, to tell you what we have here.
Mayor and Commissioner, so we present to you this evening a resolution drafted by the New Mexico Finance Authority. Typically, you're probably used to us adopting an ordinance, and so I did confirm with them, when the loans are under a million, then it's done by resolution. So at a previous meeting, I think we brought to you kind of the timetable for this loan. We're looking at, after the approval and execution, this evening, we would be looking at a loan closing date of June 10th. So at a previous meeting, we did bring to you two resolutions for the purchase of the fire equipment through the HGAC contract, which is a purchasing contract. We were able to go ahead and issue those POs because those quotes were good through the end of March. And so we've informed the Finance Authority that we've completed that step, and then the next step is the approval of this this evening. So the loan agreement, the principal amount that we're financing is $903,955. You'll recall that we did qualify for $150,000 in disadvantaged funding. So I did attach to the very back of the resolution, the debt service schedule. It's the very last page. So you'll see that our annual payments, we're pledging our fire protection funds. The annual payment, which will be intercepted every year, the first payment is $101,114. So it'll just be a little over $100,000, and it is a 10-year note. And according to the term sheet, we've got a blended interest rate of 1.688640%. So very good interest rate. Rates are starting to, to creep up, so the timing of this is, is very good. Other than that, our first principal payment, the nice thing about this is the delivery time on this equipment is possibly 22 months. So the Finance Authority will not require our first principal payment to be due until May 1st of 2024. So I thought that was pretty good. And then our final payment would be in 2033.
All right. Any questions? That's a good question. I know I've got a couple places to sign.
Well, we actually have a complete loan package that, you're approving the resolution this evening, but we have a loan package that I'll need the mayor, the city manager, and also the city attorney. There's certain pages that he has to sign as well. And in their instructions to me, I have to return all of that by May 10th.
So this back page is just part of the resolution?
Yeah, and it doesn't get executed until the day of the closing. So, and then we'll also do the IRS form, because it's tax-exempt financing. So those are usually the two documents that I sign.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-21. Is there any further discussion? Desiree, could we have a roll call vote on this, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Item I, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-22, Submission of USDA Rural Innovation Stronger Economy Rise Grant Application and Pledge of Matching Funds for Rattone Film Project. Mr. Berry?
Mayor and Commissioner, this is in regard to the development of the Kearney School Facility that we have proposed for film production and workforce development. We're looking at a number of ways of trying to fund that project. We have estimated the project between $5 and $6 million. We do have $1.1 million that was awarded by We do have $1.1 million that was awarded by the legislature and authorized by the governor under Capital Outlay from the recent legislative session. We did submit an application to USEDA for funding. That application was not successful, and so, we're looking at other ways of funding the project. I will tell the commission that I have submitted requests for congressionally-directed spending for this project in the amount of $3 million to our federal delegation. That's Senator Heinrich, Senator Liu Han, and Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez. Similarly, I've submitted requests on behalf of the City of Rattone in the amount of $2 million to each of those for Bartlett Mesa Ranch acquisition. So, we're having some discussions on those projects today, but this is a potential funding avenue for the project. It's been identified by our partners on this, El Rattone Media. They have worked in a regional sense with a group called Media Commons. They're based in more New Mexico, very similar to our El Rattone Media works, and they have identified the RISE program that is a grant funding opportunity under the USEDA. This is a program that seeks to support job accelerator partnerships, promote private investment in regional economies, establish and operate innovation centers for job development, training, and create high-wage jobs, accelerate the formation of rural businesses, strengthen rural economies. And it does anticipate that we would have some partnerships like we're proposing with El Rattone Media and Media Commons. So, we have worked with them. I did utilize the services of Better City in helping with this application, although the, the groups did most of the work on this. So, the application has gone into USDA. Was a timing issue, the total request of $1.5 million for the project. And what you would consider here is pledging $350,000 of the capital outlay of the $1.1 million to match that grant. And so, with the things that we're talking about, we hope to get the project fully funding. I, I think that it's one of the most critical projects we have for economic development because we'd like to get this going as, as soon as we possibly can. We've got some work to do on the building. The, the, the ask would include building renovations and the purchase of specialized equipment that would be needed for the studio. It is XR Studio, state-of-the-art type of equipment. I'm not very familiar with it, but they assure me that that's, that would be a, a studio that would have demand from the people seeking to, to rent this type of facility or utilize this type of facility.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Berry?
No.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-22-22, submission of USDA Rural Innovation Stronger Economy by RIS in purposes of acquisition of specialized funds for the Rattone Film Project.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-22. Is there any further discussion?
Do we know, is, is Mora working on similar, it says something about workforce in our role. Can you, you know anything about what they're doing on their end?
Right. They are working on a similar program. I don't know a lot of the details of that. This would be a collaborative effort. We would share some, some efforts. And you'll recall, we talked about, we would try to utilize the services of Santa Fe Community College and, and maybe some other institutions of higher learning. So, that would be a key to the program. But it is anticipated there would be a, a similar workforce development in Moora County.
Any other comments, questions? Des, could we have a roll call on this one, please?
Sure. Mayor Scotta?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley?
Yes.
I have any motion carries. Thank you. Item J, deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-23, approval of the third quarter report fiscal year '22. Michael Antinucci.
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet this evening, we do have our third quarter report. This report is due to the Department of Finance by April 30th, so we'll get that turned in by the end of the week. I've included our general fund summary for you. You'll see that the March 31st inning cash balance was just slightly over $3 million and then less our 1/12 required reserve that gives us available cash of $2,577,144. I've also listed for you our balances and our other funds. I did make a note that the debt service within MFA, our principal and interest payments on our outstanding loans will be due May 1st. So, we're in the process of making those payments. Also, for the grocery receipts, we did receive the April grocery receipts distribution, and this reflects the April, I'm sorry, February business activity, which is typically one of our lower distribution months. So, looking at the, kind of the chart that we put together with some of the historical distributions that we've received, I was kind of just jotting down some figures here. Looks like April in 2019, 2020 was probably the lowest, and what we received for this year was probably about $90,000 more, more than that. So, you know, and I would say, you know, February probably is a bit, a little bit slower time of the year, kind of winter, off-season. March picked up a little bit more because of spring break. And now that the weather is clearing up and getting nice, again, people are starting to travel. So, also with the late Easter holiday, I think we'll see some good returns coming here in the next month. Also, I did want to bring to your attention, effective July 1st, the City of Rattone tax rate will decrease. That wasn't because of any action that we took locally, but the governor did approve House Bill 163, and that decreased the state rate an eighth of a percent, which went from 5.125% to 5%. So, the City of Rattone will still receive our 1.225% from the state. Therefore, it really won't have an impact or a decrease on the city's revenues. So, I have attached a copy for you of what our grocery receipts breakdown will look like as of July 1st. And so, this is something that we always kind of talk about during the budget, and we'll probably talk about it in more detail at our work session on Saturday. I've also included for you in your packet, the gas tax comparison report. I know Mayor Protem Schuster and I were reviewing this the other day, and I did make a note, and I've added a, a note to the report for future reference. It's not on this one. But on the Tax and Rev website, it is 17 cents per gallon, I believe is what it stated, is the distribution. So, it's, as the city manager has pointed out to us in the past, it has nothing to do with the price of the fuel, but it's a tax, excise tax per gallon. Now, our lodgers tax, that 5% is based on the rate that our lodging establishments do charge. So, we have seen over the past year, maybe two years, I think there's an increase in heads and beds, but we also think there's an increase in the rate that the local motels are charging as well. But if you look at that comparison report, as of the third quarter, we've already collected more than we did last year, which obviously, still during the COVID, a lot of them were limited on their occupancy rates. But even in 2019, 2020, we're going to surpass that amount, and I think we'll also surpass what we collected in 2018, 2019. So, very strong numbers there as well. So, is there any specific questions regarding our report?
Good job as you know.
So, I think really, my staff and the department heads, our main focus is going to be obviously to get the budget done. We have a short window to complete that process and submit to DFA by the June 1st deadline, but also kind of closing out the end of the fiscal year. So, we'll be working with department heads to close out purchase orders. A lot of the grants, it's best to try to wrap up our spending and apply for those grant reimbursements. Try to get that wrapped up in May so that in June, we're not kind of at the last minute trying to, to collect on those. So, sometimes the turnaround time can be a little slow, especially at the end of the fiscal year. I did want to point out, I don't know if anybody caught the typo on the resolution, but it did say for the financial period of March 31, 2021. So, I did correct that. I will need each of you to sign the resolution this evening before you leave.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-23, approval of third quarter report for fiscal year '22.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2022-23. Is there any further discussion, questions? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Deliberate and act on Resolution 2022-24, budget adjustment number 11 for fiscal year '22. Michael Antinucci.
Mayor and Commissioner, since we've completed our third quarter, we've kind of done a complete review of our financials, and so, we bring to you some budget adjustments within the general fund, just line item adjustments. With your approval this evening on the two bids for the senior center, I did have a little bit of money on that line item that I'm looking to just reallocate to cover some of the additional costs for the parking lot silcoat project that we talked about, and then just some other line items within the general fund. I mean, we certainly have reserves that we could draw upon, but if I see line items within the budget, it makes more sense to just kind of shift things around rather than look to reserves. We do have one item here for the greenhouse project. We did go ahead and issue a check to our greenhouse contractor, and we've submitted that to DFA for the reimbursement against that particular grant. We are still waiting for the funds, so I would like to do a temporary transfer. That grant is a $700,000 grant, so I, I think we're probably between now and June going to see some pretty large payouts to that contractor. And then, of course, at the end of the fiscal year, we would just transfer the funds back into the general fund. Also, the, under Fund 311, which is our water capital projects, as I mentioned, we do have the principal and interest payments due to NMFA by May 1st. It was brought to our attention when we received the NMFA statements this month that they hadn't been intercepting the funds from the three-quarters cent water distribution. And so, we brought that to their attention, and I guess tax and revenue haven't processed it yet. So, that does go into effect in May, but in the meantime, Waterworks had to issue us a check, and then we'll have to issue a check to NMFA. So, I had to set up a couple new line items to be able to receipt Waters' money and record the actual debt service payments. So, that's what we're requesting there. So, if there isn't any questions, I would recommend your approval of our budget adjustment 2022-2024.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-24.
Been a long day.
A motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2022-24, fiscal year '22, budget adjustment number 11.
2022.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, vote by the sound of aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Item L, city manager report. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to follow up to something we've talked about earlier in the night, the Cooks Peak Fire, I've got a little bit of an update for you. At the last report, that was this morning, they are reporting 54, over 54,000 acres has been, has burned, has been affected by the fire. They're reporting that the fire is currently 18% contained. Keep in mind, that was this morning. And then, the, Colfax County, Sweetwater, Rayado, and Sunnyside remain on go status. That means evacuated. However, Philmont Scout Ranch has returned to set status. So, that's positive. As you said, Mayor, there is a total of 541 total personnel on the Cooks Peak Fire. That's in Moora County and in Colfax County, and they have stated that they have an estimated containment date at 12:00 AM on Saturday. That's midnight on Saturday, so we'll be up to see if that happens there. But as Mayor Protem stated, we did activate our emergency center in case people that were evacuated or had some medical issue or an issue that they wanted to come to the evacuation center. They also did activate an emergency center in Springer. We did get one client, one user of that. We did have three personnel from Red Cross there. We activated that on Friday, and Friday was the day that we had really bad wind and a lot of smoke impacts and some other fires as well, some local fires. We did close the center again on Sunday, and the Red Cross was deployed to other places. So, some people bought by donations. We did forward those to, to the, the active fire areas or other areas that could use those supplies, with very little was used because we had very light usage at the, at the facility. I do have a narrative of the update, if I could give that to you real quickly. And that, this is this morning. So, they report rain and one to four inches of accumulated snow fell across the fire early Monday morning. This moisture decreased fire intensity, allowing fire crews to build direct line directly at the fire's edge. On the eastern side of the fire, firefighters also engaged in mop-up and cold trailing operations. This involves finding heat along the fire's perimeter and cooling or extinguishing it. Fuel concentrations and rugged topography on the forested west side continue to smolder and burn. Hotshot hand crews worked in this area, building hand line to stop advancement of the fire. Although Monday's moisture provided favorable conditions for fighting fire, winds and drying conditions are predicted for the next several days. As wind increases and fuels dry, fire behavior increases in intensity. So, although the moisture brought some relief, drought-stricken fuels and high winds will again challenge firefighters. Today, crews will directly, will continue direct hand line construction along the west and northwest areas of the fire. These hotshot crews will cap out to maximize their efficiency and effectiveness. Engine crews working the eastern flank of the burned area will continue with mop-up and cold trailing along with previously built dozer lanes. If conditions allow, unburned fuels will be ignited south of Sweetwater and west of County Road 21 to strengthen containment lines where rugged topography presents challenges. Some suppression repair will begin northeast of Neuronhos where the fire is contained. On the ground, tactics must vary with fuels and conditions. Every effort is being made to keep this fire footprint as small as possible. With yesterday's moisture, there is not a lot of heat established right now. "It is a good day to go direct," said Arthur Gonzalez, fire behavior analyst with the Southwest Incident Management Team Five. I would just wrap that up by stating that Rattone Fire Department has been on the, on the scene, and we've used all the resources that we can, as well as volunteers in our, in our area, the mutual aid. in our area, the mutual aid agreements. So I think we've done pretty well with, with what we've got, and now we have a lot more resources on it. Aircraft have been deployed over the last couple of days. I think they're effective on those hotspots that are primarily on the west perimeter, as we talked about in the rough country. Modeling suggests that the winds would come out of the southwest towards the northeast over the next couple of days. That really is, is blowing that back into the black. So that gives us some optimism that that Saturday containment date will be realistic. That's what I have on the, on the Cook's Peak Fire. I have placed some maps in the lobby. That's the latest mapping that we have. You all have some mapping that would be now two days old. And you see the difference is, there was an extra division that was attached to the north end of this fire based out of Philmont, so that's where a lot of the additional resources in Colfax County have been assigned. So we're, we're very happy about that. I would like to talk about something that the governor had brought up in her recent news releases. She has stated, and we agree with this, we have extremely dry conditions. This is April. We have not, to my knowledge, had a wildfire in April, and we have these very large events going on in New Mexico. The long-term forecast does not look good for early summer and maybe until fall. And so we have talked about, what do we do with fireworks this year? I would like to bring it up today because I do intend to, as the mayor and I discussed, really research the city's ability to, to limit or ban all fireworks in Raton. And there's some legal considerations there. I will ask counsel at New Mexico Municipal League. That's what the governor has asked, that every local government ban all fireworks. Now, I would anticipate that the city fireworks show would go on as planned because we have trained professional firefighters and trained professional show operators that will, will control that. However, I think that I will bring to you some consideration to, to ban all use of fireworks if, if we can do that. So I'll be working on that, and we would plan to bring something to you at the next meeting. I do want to caution the public on that. It's just an extremely dangerous year, this year. So I would submit that. I have submitted the resolution along with a letter to the full New Mexico federal delegation regarding the VA clinic and the proposed closure. That's the resolution that you all passed last time, and it requests that we keep these New Mexico clinics open. So that is submitted to all five of the New Mexico federal delegation. It's not too late for the public to also submit a letter. Those addresses are easy to find. You can send it to, to any address on the website of Senator Heinrich, Senator Liuhan, Congresswoman Ledger Fernandez, Congresswoman Stansberry, and Congresswoman Harrell. So if you can find their website, all the addresses there. The more letters we get, the more effective this effort is. But we did have a great turnout at the Shutter Theater. The comments that came back was, that was one of the, the best-attended public hearings that was held throughout the state. So I would thank the veterans of our community and the concerned citizens of our community for taking the time to make their feelings known. That's all I have, Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Item N, M, close executive session pursuant to Section 10-15-1. H, threaten litigation, City of Raton and force racing at Raton. OLP, they maintain a motion to go into closed executive session. So move. We have a motion and a second to go into closed executive session. All in arms, do a roll call vote there, Desiree.
Uh huh, Mayor Scotta.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Schuster.
Yes.
Commissioner Chavez.
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chatterley.
Yes.
All righty, we are in closed session with a five-minute recess.